Okay, everyone, we're live.
Okay, great. It's 6:05. We have a quorum. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a public meeting, a special meeting of the Board of Education, to recognize our amazing students for their academic achievements, as well as their achievements in co-curricular and extracurricular activity. Before we start the festivities, I'd like us to stand and recite the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight's a special night. Unfortunately, we need to do it over Zoom this year. Besides, it looks like it might rain this evening, so this is probably a good idea in retrospect. But without further ado, let me turn over the festivities to Dr. Mcursie, who will be the master of ceremonies this evening.
Great. Thank you, Tony. And to echo what Tony said, this is an evening of celebration. What the Board has always done for many, many years, and if everyone could mute, that would be very, very helpful, please. What the Board has done for many, many years is if we have any of our students, and also staff, but this is focused on students, any of our students who want a recognition that's at the statewide or beyond, that they would, at the nearest meeting possible, bring that student and their family forward to recognize them. We're such a successful district in all the areas we'll talk about tonight, that a couple of years ago, the Board said, "Let's do one at the end of the fall. Let's do one at the end of the spring." Last year, because of COVID hitting hard and sending us all home, it was a bit not possible to do. So here we are now for this winter-spring, really the spring, honoring a whole set of our top achievers. The academic awards you'll hear tonight are year-long awards. Let me also note that a wonderful tradition of Weston is that our seniors have a senior award night, and there are about 30, 40 major awards distributed that evening that cross the spectrum of everything, the academic, through the artistic, the musical, the theatrical, service, athletics. So we're not replicating that. These are other equally honorable individuals, not necessarily seniors. Some seniors are picked up in this, but I want the families who've joined us to know that we get a lot of excellence here. People work hard to achieve that excellence, and we honor it at this time of year. Now, as Tony mentioned, we have to be Zoom at this point. We prefer to be outside and amongst each other, but actually, it turned out that was a good call due to weather. We cannot be inside in big groups at this point yet. We're getting close on that. So we're doing this via Zoom. We looked into the possibility of when we list an awardee to have that awardee's image show, and that was just too complicated to bounce amongst the many awardees we have. So instead, all through this presentation, you will see the Google slideshow. And immediately after this, we will post this Google slideshow officially with the CAPE meeting notice, where all the Board's information that is discussed is posted, and we'll post it right up on our website. So we'll get out in our social media, honoring all of those individuals. The way we'll proceed is we have a set of awards. I think many of you received the categories by email earlier today. I will call on a particular individual, who will announce the winner in that particular category. While that's happening, you'll see on the screen the award and the name. And then we'll proceed through. We had made do an omnibus motion at the end by the Board to honor. We'll go one by one. Gina, are you on yet? I don't know if you decided to go one by one or do an omnibus at the very end.
Since we have the slide deck, we can just do it one by one, so they can each have their moment to be recognized.
Yeah, that's great. So without further ado, let's proceed. And the first category we're looking at is within the academic area, and it's CAPE Student Leadership Award. And I'm going to call on Dan Dope, please.
Thank you, Dr. Mcursie. I have a few words to say with input from the teachers. So first, let me talk about Sidney Grunberg. Sidney is described by her team of teachers as a responsible, kind, creative, and humble young woman. She was new to Weston in grade seven and has continued to impress us with her high academic achievement, quiet leadership, and artistic talents. Sidney has been a straight A student in middle school, even with an accelerated mathematics placement. She has a sense of determination and dedication to excellence in all that she does. Her work is always thoughtfully done, and her contributions to class discussions demonstrate tremendous awareness and sensitivity. Additionally, she is well-respected by staff and students alike, and as a result, has great leadership potential. Sidney is an outstanding young lady, and we are very proud of her commitment and dedication. Weston Middle School is very fortunate to have someone like Sidney as a member of our community. Congratulations, Sidney Grunberg. Our second student is Sophia Krasinski. "Kind-natured, hard-working, and conscientious" are just a few of the words Sophia's team of teachers used to describe her. Throughout her time at Weston Middle School, Sophia has managed to find the balance between academics, athletics, and co-curricular interests. She also has been a straight A student in middle school with a double accelerated mathematics placement and project challenge on her course load. Her desire to know the hows and whys of historical issues, geometric theorems, scientific concepts, and literature themes are just a few examples of her passion for learning. In addition to this, Sophia is a leader in class and shares her positive attitude and enthusiasm with her classmates every time she steps through a classroom door. Whether it is collaborating with her classmates on a project or participating in a class discussion, she is always engaged, prepared, and ready for any challenges. Her academic integrity, respect for peers and teachers, and perseverance throughout her middle school years make Sophia highly deserving of this prestigious award. Congratulations, Sophia.
Now for the motion.
Can I have a motion?
Move that the Board of Education recognizes CAPE's Student Leadership Award awarded to Sidney Grunberg and Sophia Krasinski.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, Taffy.
Aye, Gina.
Aye, Victor.
Aye, Melissa.
Aye, Tony. All opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations to Sidney and Sophia.
Before moving to the next award, I'm going to give you the incentive to stay all the way through to celebrate everybody. After the last slide, I'm going to take the screen share off, and we'll all be visible to each other. And I would ask the keeper of the switch on this meeting, Mr. DeVito, not to shut us down until people had a chance to see each other across the Zoom format. I forgot to say that in the beginning. So now to our next award, please. I'm going to call on Patty Faber for the Mathematical Olympiads for Elementary and Middle Schools. Patty?
Thank you, Dr. Mcursie. So good evening. I am so pleased that we are taking time tonight and we get to recognize Seona Duda for her outstanding achievement on our Math Olympiads team. Seona is a fifth grader at WIS, who is part of our team of students who were able to participate in the Math Olympiads program this year. She and other members of the team competed with other fourth through sixth grade students from around the country, as well as internationally. Just so you know, historically, the Math Olympiad program each year has about 170,000 students from 6,000 teams participating worldwide. This year, Seona scored in the top 2%, earning her a gold pin, which is a significant accomplishment and one that I know she should be very proud of, as I know we are. So congratulations, Seona.
Can I have a motion, please?
Move that the Weston Board of Education recognize Seona Duda for her gold pin in the Mathematical Olympiads for Elementary and Middle School students.
Second?
Second. Taffy?
Thank you, Taffy. All in favor?
Aye, Gina.
Aye, Taffy.
Aye, Melissa.
Aye, Victor.
Aye, Tony. All opposed? Motion passes. Incredible achievements, Seona. Congratulations.
And now, the excellence continues. I'm going to turn for the next award and set of awards to Principal and Incoming Superintendent Lisa Wolack.
Thank you, Dr. Mcursie. It gives me great pleasure to introduce our National Merit Scholarship semifinalists, members of the Class of 2021. And just to remind everyone, the National Merit Scholarship program is based on the scores of 1.5 million juniors and their performance on the PSAT. These three proud members of the Class of 2021 are in the top 1% of that. Ronan Duffy, Byron Hart, and Colleen Moore. Congratulations.
Have a motion, please.
Move that the Weston Board of Education recognize the National Merit Scholarship semifinalist this year for the Class of 2021, Ronan Duffy, Byron Hart, and Colleen Moore.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Taffy. All in favor?
Aye, Gina.
Aye, Taffy.
Aye, Melissa.
Aye, Victor.
Aye, Tony. All opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, Ronan, Byron, and Colleen.
And now we go to the next category, and Incoming Superintendent Wolack, Principal Wolack, this is your area, too. Thank you.
This is for the Civics First Mock Trial Tournament State Champions of Connecticut. And before I announce the winners, I would like to thank the advisor to this program. This is Laura Del Salvio, who has been doing this for many years and is actually stepping down this year. Thank you, Laura. We really appreciate your dedication. When I heard that they won the state champions, I said, "Of course", because it just seems like, of course, we would win. It's just a superb group. So I would like to thank and congratulate Sarah Albert, Sidney Corbren, Jordan Conlin, who, fun fact, was also recognized as the best witness in the championship, Lindsay Greenberg, Emma Knapp, Lauren Lacra, Rebecca Roney, Gavin Spando, and Knox, sorry, Knox Watson, who was also honored with the award of Best Attorney, Best Performance as an Attorney. So congratulations to our Mock Trial State Champions.
Have a motion, please?
And quickly, before I make the motion, quite a handful of these kids were on the team last year that were declared state co-champions when the finals got waylaid by COVID. So some of them are actually two-time champions. Move that the Weston Board of Education recognize the Weston High School Mock Trial Team for their state championship in Civics First. Members are Sarah Albert, Sidney Corbren, Jordan Conlin, Lindsay Greenberg, Emma Knapp, Lauren Lacra, Rebecca Roney, Gavin Spando, and Knox Watson.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye, Taffy.
Aye, Gina.
Aye, Victor.
Aye, Tony. All opposed? Motion passes. This is an incredible program, and if you haven't seen the teams in action, I recommend that you do. Honestly, this is the first, this is the second time that I've actually watched a team in action, and it's pretty incredible to see, to observe, and it's just an incredible program. Congratulations again to the entire team.
And as we shift to the next category, we've had some people join us as we've been proceeding. Let me review that we are awarding those who've received state-level recognition and above. So there's a lot of recognition here, but no, the criteria for a long time has been state-level and above. And I also noticed that we are going to post the Google slides. We will make corrections before it's posted, so we'll make sure our list is accurate. So Ms. Wolack, you have the next one as well.
Again, it gives me great pleasure to congratulate first place in the Connecticut State TSA Teams Program. We are not in the top 200 STEM schools in the country. We have fabulous students, and this award illustrates our exemplary program and their commitment. What is the TSA Teams? It is the test of engineering aptitude for math and science. And this problem that they had to solve this year was engineering solutions in a pandemic. Great work, team. Congratulations to Paige Corbren, Sean Esslinger, Dwight Koiner, and Alexis Rosen on this honor.
Have a motion, please?
Move that the Weston Board of Education recognize the TSA Teams First Place State Award for Paige Corbren, Sean Esslinger, Dwight Koiner, and Alexis Rosen.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, Taffy.
Aye, Melissa.
Aye, Victor.
Aye, Tony. All opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations again to Paige, Sean, Dwight, and Alexis. Well done.
Continuing in our academic categories, Lisa Wolack bringing us to, I believe, the environmental area.
That's correct, Dr. Mcursie. It is my pleasure to announce that the grand prize winner for the Who-Satonic Resources Recovery Authority for her beautiful artwork, and it is beautiful. I was privileged to attend that Zoom Awards presentation. Maddie Rapko, your artwork is going to be on the billboard of buses in the Who-Satonic area, which is just, what a really cool award. Congratulations, Madeline Rapko.
Have a motion, please?
Move that the Weston Board of Education recognize the HRAA Recycle Right Billboard Contest winner, Madeline Rapko.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, Gina.
Aye, Melissa.
Aye, Taffy.
Aye, Victor.
Aye, Tony. All opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, Madeline. I can't wait to see your artwork on the buses. Thank you for all your hard work.
If you want a preview, you can see it. I believe I posted it on Instagram. If you want to go back, it's really cool.
We now move from the environmental through art to writing. So Ms. Wolack?
Yes, we are very proud of our students' achievement in writing. Writing is such an important skill that we've developed K-12. And so it gives me great pleasure to announce that the Hudson to Who-Satonic Scholastic Writing Award, which really celebrates team writers, first place or Gold Key goes to Katherine J.
Can I have a motion, please?
Move that the Weston Board of Education recognize the Gold Key Award for the Hudson to Who-Satonic Scholastic Writing Award for Katherine J.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, Gina.
Aye, Taffy.
Aye, Melissa.
Aye, Victor.
Aye, Tony. All opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, Katherine.
Now we shift.
Katherine.
We love it. Real time. Real time. So now we shift from one part of the mine to another part of the mine for a series of music awards. And we truly are showing off, as we proceed through this evening, the renaissance talents and abilities of the Weston student. Let me take a moment to say, without all of the families and all of the faculty and the administrators, you know, students, you wouldn't be so recognized. So through this, please, we applaud you. We're also applauding your families and the Weston faculty and staff who really helped you. Liz Morris, are you on now for this next set of awards?
I am. I'm here. Great. Thank you. We're so excited to be able to recognize our Connecticut Music Education Association All-State Participants this year. Last year, about two weeks before the festival, the students found out that there would not be an all-state festival last year. So this year, they participated in a virtual festival, which was more of an all-state experience, they called it. So our first recipient is for the CMEA All-State Band, Matthew Schrader.
Have a motion, please?
Move that the Weston Board of Education recognize the CMEA All-State Band recognition for Matthew Schrader.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, Taffy.
Aye, Gina.
Aye, Melissa.
Aye, Victor.
Aye, Tony. All opposed? Motion passes. Personally, not having a musical bone in my body, I'm particularly in awe of these musical awards. Congratulations, Matthew.
Liz, you get to continue us with vocal.
With our all-state choir. These students also participated virtually this year.
A little louder, please, Liz.
These students also participated virtually this year, and they were Tejal DeMann and Konstantina Gudahides.
Have a motion, please?
Move that the Weston Board of Education recognize the CMEA All-State Choir honorees Tejal DeMann and Konstantina Gudahides.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, Taffy.
Aye, Gina.
Aye, Melissa.
Aye, Victor.
Aye, Tony. All opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, Tejal and Konstantina.
And now we return to strings and other such instruments with the orchestra.
One more in our all-state orchestra this year, who participated also virtually, Jessica Lee.
Have a motion, please?
Move that the Weston Board of Education recognize Jessica Lee for her CMEA All-State Orchestra Honor.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, Taffy.
Aye, Gina.
Aye, Melissa.
Aye, Victor.
Aye, Tony. All opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, Jessica.
And we now shift to another choral award. Liz, please.
So this is our National Association for Music Education All Eastern Festival, which ranges from Maryland all the way up to Maine. Students petition for this and are selected to participate. Two recipients, Paige Bjorki and Tejal DeMann. And I think that one of them was in the treble choir and one was in the nick, I don't remember off the top of my head. I apologize. They were in two separate choirs and there's two separate virtual recordings out there. If anybody is interested, you can search on YouTube for the 2021 All Eastern Choir.
Have a motion, please?
Move that the Weston Board of Education recognize Paige Bjorki and Tejal DeMann for their honor in the NAFME All Eastern Choir.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, Taffy.
Aye, Melissa.
Aye, Gina.
Aye, Victor.
Aye, Tony. All opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, Paige and Tejal.
We now shift to the athletics in a time when it was chillier than today. Mark Berkowitz, please.
Yes, much, much, much chillier. Actually, I'd like to take us all the way back to the fall and just thank everyone for all the efforts that were made to get our athletes out on the field. We weren't even sure back in the fall if we would have seasons, what the seasons would look like. We started in cohorts. We started in small groups and separated. And it was really an interesting year. And even through all that, our athletes just came through in such an amazing way. Overall, the athletes won 10 Southwest Conference Team Champions this school year, which is amazing. You know, they continue to awe me what the athletes and the coaches achieve every year. There are schools in our conference who haven't won 10 conference championships in their history. And we won 10 this year in a shortened year where not all the sports had the opportunities. Boys soccer, girls soccer, and girls swim and dive in the fall. Girls, boys and girls ski in the winter. Boys and girls track and field, boys and girls tennis and baseball in the spring. It's just really incredible. We still have two teams who are competing this spring. Girls lacrosse plays tomorrow in the state semifinals at Shan High School, and boys lacrosse plays on Wednesday night at East Lime High School, also in the state semifinals. So we unfortunately won't get to those two teams because their seasons aren't over yet. But we do have three state championship teams this school year, which is really impressive when you think that in the fall and the winter, the only sports in the winter that crowned state champions were the ski teams. There were no state champions in the fall. So it's really the ski teams and then the spring season were the only opportunities to win state championships. The first team we're going to recognize tonight is our boys ski team that not only won the Class S state championship, but for the second time in the history of our school that we've been able to find were the state open champions, which means not only they beat everyone our size and then beat all the bigger schools, too. Really impressive feat. So Rich Fanning is here as their coach and is going to introduce the athletes. Rich?
Hi, everyone. Our boys ski team champions this year were Chris Amato, Mike Amato, Tim Amato, Will Lamato. No, I'm just kidding. It seems like a third of the team is Amatos this season. But Will Harris, Ben Landsman, Doug Phillips, Nick Sekapades, Will Riley, Josh Schlechter, and Ben Wilder.
Great. Can I have a motion, please?
Move that the Weston Board of Education recognize the boys ski team for their Class S and state open championships.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, Taffy.
Aye, Gina.
Aye, Melissa.
Aye, Victor.
Aye, Tony. All opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations to the boys ski team for an outstanding season.
And Coach Fanning, thank you. I don't know if you're listening earlier, when I wanted to make sure, we're always thanking the adults around our young people's achievements. So, Coach, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
The intensity of your role and lots of industry here and lots of product. So we now will go to the next athletic award, and Mark Berkowitz will still proceed with there.
Yeah, you notice I didn't mention wrestling when we were talking about all the team awards. Wrestling was one of two sports this season that didn't get to compete fully in their sport, which is really a shame. But that didn't stop this senior athlete from achieving great heights anyway. And I'll introduce his head coach, Mario Federici, to introduce him.
Our guy is Breon Pfeifer. Again, what Mr. Berkowitz said, we've had no all-New England wrestlers, and this year was our first year of all time. So I'm very appreciative of having him on the team, and we're happy to have him.
Fantastic. Can I have a motion, please?
That the Weston Board of Education recognize Breon Pfeifer for his recognition as an all-New England wrestler.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Hi Taffy.
Hi Gina.
I'm Melissa.
Hi Victor.
Hi Tony. All opposed? Motion passes. Well done, Breon. Congratulations.
And Coach, again, thank you for all you've done for your athletes at all levels. Thank you, Coach.
Thank you.
So now we'll keep proceeding down the athletic path towards some fleet of feet and ability to get in the air.
Yeah, and another amazing double for this group, winning both SWC and state championships. They are also still competing as they, on Wednesday morning now, their open championship just got changed, will compete at the state open level. I'll introduce their head coach, Matt Medvee, so he can talk about his team and his athletes.
Thanks, Mark. It was just great to compete this year. We missed last spring, and I was just so happy for the kids to have an opportunity this season. And I'm just so proud of all of them and everything that they have achieved. And hopefully, we can keep it going on Wednesday morning. Hopefully, you guys can watch it live. I think they're posting it live. Is that true, Mark?
Yes, I believe it's on NFHS, yep.
Awesome. I would like to congratulate Grace Chan, Lucy Fine, Blue Parker, Julia Rosenberg, Nicole Stokelski, Ava Zalinski, Shay Green, Evelyn Miano, Abby Miles, Amelia Rudolph, Kathleen Saucy, Kat Tunney, Victoria Kuzma, Caitlin McKeernan, Campbell McNulty, Brooke Wagner, Ellison Wiener, Gianna Blunchy, Charlotte Carter, and Kira Severt. It's a great bunch of girls. Thank you so much. What a great season.
Can I have a motion please?
Move that the Weston Board of Education recognize the girls track and field state champion?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi Taffy.
Hi Gina.
I'm Melissa.
Hi Victor.
Hi Tony. All opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations to the girls track and field team.
And Coach, thank you. And I've watched your farm system in the middle school and some of the paces you put your middle schoolers through. So I get a clue as to how come you become so dominant at the high school level. So congratulations to you for taking the long view with all of our students. So Mark, you're on a roll here. We're now going to go to the boys side of this.
And just before we get to the boys, the girls state championship meet was won by 1.5 points. It was that close, that exciting, came down to the last race, and it was just amazing feat that the dominance that our teams have shown over the years. They won the SWC meet by about 90 points, so you can see the difference. On to the boys track and field team, who also doubled this year, dominating the SWC meet, and I believe seeded third going into the state championship meet and came away as state champions. And that speaks volumes to those athletes and their coaches and how they were prepared for their meet. Their head coach is Lloyd Weinstein, and I will introduce him to talk about his athletes.
Thank you very much, Mark. I want to first off, thank all my coaches, Matt Medvee, Doug Pregnant, Tim Murray, Mario Federici. We had an incredibly great season, and after missing last year, I can say it was incredibly fulfilling to see the joy that these kids exuded after winning both SWCs and states. It was a really special day. I'd like to recognize Matt Bigelow, Cooper Kapowa, John Casole, Cooper Clemens, Alexander Coleman, Jacob Fine, Kevin Joyce, Rex Kaplan, Brandon Luzey, Nate Lucetta, Cole Manzonielli, Antonio Myla Fort, Daniel Ortiz, Richard Palmer, Doug Phillips, Luke Rubin, Ryan Ruprecht, Tyler Schiffer, Aaron Smith, and Jack Spencer. Thank you very much.
Can I have a motion please?
Move that the Weston Board of Education recognize the boys track and field team for their state championship.
Second?
Second.
Thanks, Melissa. All in favor?
Hi Gina.
I'm Melissa.
Hi Taffy.
Hi Victor.
Hi Tony. All opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations to the boys track and field team for their state championship.
And Coach, again, thank you. And thank you for mentoring all your fellow coaches that brought you this success. So congratulations, Coach.
Thank you very much.
So we now shift to the next to last slide. Remember, don't go anywhere, because I'm going to take the screen share off so you can all see each other, and Mr. DeVito don't shut us down too fast. Let me say one other thing. We have certificates. They're wonderful certificates. Some of you as achievement people have received these before. We will send those out electronically in the next several days to all of you. I caught one mistake here. We'll fix that. And after that's fixed, we will post this slideshow, both with the Cape site, which is where all the board's official business is posted, and up on our website. And I'm told by Mr. DeVito, that'll be picked up appropriately by social media. So I just want to thank all of you for achieving at such high levels. There's a phrase, lots of industry. You sometimes get products, sometimes you don't. I used it a few minutes ago. Lots of industry here and immense product in truly Renaissance fashion. And this is a signature for Weston. A relatively small district, and this is all state-level or above achievement. So this extent of industry and product just speaks volumes, volumes, the incredible excellence and compassion and care that make this district. So I'm going to go off the screen share, and now is our chance to say hello, everybody. Unless, and then Tony, you can bring us a closing word, please.
Sure.
So here's your moment. Honor each other, however you want.
Congratulations to everybody.
Congratulations to everyone. I don't know if any of the board members want to say a few words?
I'll go. I just think that taking the time to recognize these outstanding achievements of our students, it allows the faculty to see the payoff of all the work they do, you know, when our students have this level of success. And also, so many of these programs, there's such tremendous community support for them. And that's something that's just spectacular when you have community mentors and when you have coaches, you know, from all walks of life who step in and get involved. It's just, it's just a wonderful coming together and the mentorship that happens amongst the grades and some of these programs is just, it's just outstanding, whether it's athletes, you know, in the high school working with younger kids, whether it's our mock trial team in the high school, working with the middle school, or in our music or theater program. Just the connection amongst the schools and the grades of our students is just phenomenal. And just hats off to all of our winners today and to all of our staff who had a part in supporting our students to reach these milestones.
Yes, I, it's, whenever we have these award ceremonies, I'm always, I'm always struck, I'm always in awe at, at the amount of talent and energy we have in this district. And, you know, these awards are, you know, awards for exemplary performance in whatever the discipline is. And, but, but more than that, I think these are lessons that the students will take with them for the rest of their lives. And, and I thank the, the entire staff, the coaching staff, the teaching staff, and the administration for dedicating their careers to not only helping our students achieve this success, but also setting them up for success long after they leave Weston. And that's, that's what this is all about. And, and I thank the students, the parents, and the administration and the staff for all of this hard work and all of this success. It's, it's great to see.
I just want to say to all of you guys that were on here tonight and had that feeling when you were standing up there as winning attorney Knox, or when you were standing up there as, as winning athlete, or, you know, that feeling that you had in your chest when you won, that feeling you have tonight when you're being recognized. There's going to be more of that. There's going to be lots more of that. And there are going to be some disappointments too. But you've had a taste of how great that feels to just really accomplish and, and set the tone for, as Tony said, your years ahead. Bravo to you all.
Great.
Yes, I'd like to just echo what everybody said. As Tony and Bill said at the beginning, these are honors that sometimes we get to experience, you know, throughout our board meetings year-round. And it's always something I look forward to at every meeting is to see the wonderful accomplishments of all of our students because they're reflective of, of the staff and the families and friends and the community. So I was really looking forward to this tonight, and it just put a big smile on my face to see all these wonderful achievements. So thank you to everybody for your hard work and congratulations. We're so very proud of all of you.
Okay, with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Great. Meeting adjourned. Congratulations again to everyone.